Oh, good evening, everybody. How's everyone tonight? Anne, you here?
Hi, Pat, yes.
All right. Well, it's almost 6 o'clock. Why don't we go over a couple of ground rules before we get going here? We still got people coming, but, okay, so this is just gonna be the special board meeting for the zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. Okay, can everybody see the message I have up there?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go over a few ground rules and then we can get going here. So, we are recording this on Zoom tonight. This is Pat, I'm the moderator, Pat Polito, I'm the moderator. When you talk, please state your name. If you're a board member, say you're a board member, consultant, or who you're representing, please, because we're gonna have to get a transcript of this. And so with the person doing the transcript, we need to know who's talking. It sounds a little weird at first, but before you start talking, please state your name. Okay? And so to make this run a little smoother, with a little, you know, technical issues as possible. So if you're not talking, please mute your audio so we don't hear everybody's background and stuff like that. When speaking, like I said, please state your name. You're encouraged to use headphones and a microphone. That's easier, you don't get as much feedback when you talk. If you don't have it, that's fine, too. And if there's two or more of you watching from the meeting, please make sure you only have one person's audio on. Okay? Anne, it's all yours.
All right, thank you very much, Pat. Thanks for laying down those ground rules.
You didn't state your name, Anne.
You're right. Anne, Chair, I call this meeting to order. The special meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, May 27, 2020. And we'll begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic stands
Which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone, welcome our members. Gonna introduce our members for tonight. We have Martin Steinbach, John Schmidt, Bill Shover, Patricia Curran, and myself, Anne Clemente, Chair of tonight's meeting.
Can I make one more suggestion? This is Pat Polito again.
Of course, Pat.
Okay, after the board member's name and Anne, if you could, I guess it's up in the top right-hand corner, you can change it. After your name, put like Anne, you're the chairman, and then have the members put "member" after their name. That way, people watching the Zoom meeting can tell who are the members.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, back to you.
Thank you.
Anne, if I could excuse you a second, this is Chuck Allentown, or the town building inspector. Can I do a roll call vote, or the roll call attendance?
Of course.
Chairman Clemente?
Here.
Member Patricia Curran?
Here.
Member John Schmidt? I believe I saw... Yeah. I see John, I think he's muted.
About this here?
Yeah, okay.
I'm trying to figure the screen out, I don't know what's
Remember Bill Shover? I'm wondering if he was that call-in number. Well, hopefully, there, you are right there. All right. I see Mr. Shover right there, I will put him down as present. Member Martin Steinbach. I see Member Steinbach's name. I have Mr. Steinbach there, hopefully he'll be able to come off of mute and and affirm his attendance, but I have his picture there. I have a call from one of the individuals that is supposed to be in the meeting, and I will answer that phone call now, thank you, Anne. This is Chuck Allentown, again, Chairman Clemente, you're muted.
All right, yep, sorry. So I'd like to review our agenda. This is the, taking the place of the March 16, 2020 meeting. Number one, we had AJ Sign variance. And for the record, that public hearing was closed on February 24, 2020. The board has 62 days in which to render a decision. The applicant has withdrawn at this time, so it's not on tonight's agenda. We'll move on to their second applicant for the agenda is Sign Studio, Inc. It's a sign variance. That's concerned 672 Husick Road. Our third is an area variance. That's from Lynn Courier, address 9 Bleakley Avenue. And then for our last and third public hearing for tonight, we have Frederick seeking an area variance, the address 3697 New York State Route 2. And then after our public hearings, we'll entertain five new business applications. Next what we'll do is look at our draft minutes from our previous meeting, which was February 24, 2020. I would make a motion to approve the draft minutes for that meeting. If any member liked a second.
Pat Curran, member, I'll second.
Thank you, Pat. And just for the record, there was no meeting in March. No zoning board meeting of appeals in April. Okay. So our first item of Sorry?
Chairperson Clemente, this is Attorney Gilchrist, not to interrupt.
No problem.
One other order of business is when there is action to be taken, we'll need to conduct a roll call vote, just to make the record clear.
Sure.
And kind of as a test run, there was a motion and seconded to approve the February 24 minutes as submitted without amendment. And so we should probably do a roll call vote for that motion. So I think, given that you're one of the voting members, if it's okay with you, I'll run through and conduct the roll call.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Okay, Attorney Gilchrist here. So on the motion to approve the February 24 minutes as submitted, Member Steinbach? Member Schmidt? And if you can remember when to unmute yourself, so that we can have it clear on the record. So again, Member Schmidt? Well, we're gonna move forward with that. Member Shover? Interesting. Member Curran?
I approve.
And Chairperson Clemente? Chairperson Clemente, you did, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I approve.
So at least on the record, we clearly have the affirmative three votes. We'll figure out the mute for Member Schmidt and figure out participation for Member Shover as we proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to our first item, Notice of Public Hearing. And this is for Hoffman's Car Wash, located at 672 Husick Road. Attorney Gilchrist, would you like to read the Notice of Public Hearing? Each one, there are two paragraphs. So perhaps for this first applicant, if you want to read the entire Notice of Public Hearing, and then maybe in subsequent notices, maybe just the first paragraph, if you're immune to that.
Well, again, Attorney Gilchrist here, I do apologize, Chairperson Clemente. I don't have the, in front of me, the written public hearing notices. I know they are on the website and they were published in the record, but unfortunately, given the setup, I don't have them in writing in front of me. And given that the Zoom meeting is occurring, I can't get to them electronically. If you do have them, if you could read them into the record.
Certainly. Right, right, certainly. So notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, May 27, 2020, concerning the application for sign variance submitted by Sign Studio, Inc., for Hoffman's Car Wash located at 672 Husick Road. Applicant seeks approval to allow a total of five signs, where the Brunswick sign law allows a total of two signs at this location. And then the common paragraph reads, pursuant to the Governor's executive orders 202.1 and 202.15, the Town of Brunswick will be holding the May 27, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting over the Internet, accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the 2027 May Remote Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, as well as copies of the signed variance application for public inspection, will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing, and this was placed on the town signboard in our newspaper of record, which is the record, and also on the website.
And Chairperson Clemente, Attorney Gilchrist here again. If we could also confirm for the record that the public hearing notices were mailed as well to owners of properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Thank you for that addition, that's correct. I would like then to ask the representative, if they would like to give a little summary of this project.
Good evening. I'm Raul Lovac, I'm here representing Hoffman Car Wash, located at 672 Husick Road. Requesting a sign variance for three additional signs. Currently, a little background is that there was an additional sign on the building. It was a sign that directed people to a touch-free car wash, which is very common for businesses that have drive-through services to have an additional sign. We also have one freestanding sign, and it's interesting to note that the one freestanding sign actually encapsulates two signs. So if you were to go to the facility, you would only see actually one sign, but they're actually being counted as two signs, because there's a secondary message attached to it. For just a little background. It also, so what we're looking for is that, to keep things that it's like very common in this town of Brunswick, is that when you have a freestanding sign, you also see a complimentary building sign. And for Hoffman Car Wash, we like to have the same respect as other businesses had, and putting the Hoffman Car Wash logo on the building. And I'm sure that most people have seen that there is a reconstruction going on at this time. The building is being done over. What we would call is the exit from the tunnel, which is parallel to Husick Road, right above it is where we like to put the logo. So it'd be right at the exit of the tunnel up above. That would encapsulate the word Hoffman Car Wash with their logo. The other two signs that we're requesting are for the tunnels' touch-free service signs. So we're looking for those to be placed above the tunnels. Currently, we're allowed 300 square feet and two signs. We're requesting five signs with a total square footage of 127.4, which is not even 50% of what is allowed. So I do ask that the board members take all these into consideration, and if they have any questions, I'd be free to answer them.
Thank you for that summary. Are there any questions at this time from any of the board members?
Mr. Gilchrist, what are the colors of the new signs gonna be? With the white, I know the side, the new siding is white. What are the colors of the new signs?
The business logo, the Hoffman Car Wash, they have what is called a day-night lettering style, or day-night color style. So during the day, it'll be black. So the faces will be black, and at night, when it lights up, they'll light up white. Also, keep in mind that when it lights up white at night, it's not gonna be your typical clear white light, because the black vinyl that's over the top acts as a diffuser. So if you kind of envision a perforated material, or say a flat material with a bunch of tiny holes in it. And within those tiny holes, the white light pushes through at night and illuminates white. But again, it's a diffuser, so it's not an extremely bright white. And then your logo, for the Hoffman Car Wash logo, has some blue and red accents, but that portion of the sign is probably 20% of the overall front logo sign. Then your touch-free car wash will incorporate the same day-night color effects, black during the day and white at night. Those signs are only 15-inch tall letters for the touch frame. It's not a very big sign, encompasses 15 square feet per sign.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from any of the other members at this time? Okay. Not hearing any at this time. The zoning board will open the floor for receipt of public comment. If anybody would like, from the public, to speak for this application or against it, you have the opportunity now to do that. So hearing no public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this application.
Pat, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Anne, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Bill.
Okay.
So we're at the point now where there is a motion on the table to close the public hearing portion of this application. And not hearing any comment from the public. If there are any other questions from the board members at this time, at this time, we could ask them. If not, if we're kind of clear, then I would ask for one of the members to second the motion to close the publicly, public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in
This is Pat, the moderator again. Let me say, before you talk, you gotta state your name, Marty and Bill, because we get a transcript of this, but the transcripter doesn't know who says it unless you say your name.
Steinbach will second then.
Thank you. Shall we do a roll call to see if that's, if we're in favor? Is that how we should proceed?
Attorney Gilchrist, that is how the board should proceed, and I just want to make it clear for the record. Who was the member that made the motion to close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, so
And Chairperson.
Chairperson Clemente made the motion to close the public hearing on the sign variance application for Sign Studio, seconded by Member Steinbach for a roll call vote. Member Steinbach?
I
Member Schmidt?
Member Schmidt, aye.
Member Shover?
Member Shover, aye.
Member Curran?
Member Curran, aye.
And Chairperson Clemente?
Chairperson Clemente, aye. Thank you. So now the zoning board members are prepared to deliberate and act on this application. We can look at our standards. Just, I would like to say for the record that this application was presented to the Rensselaer County Bureau of Economic Development and Planning, and they have determined that the proposal does not have any major impact on county plans, and local considerations shall prevail. If we want to look at the question.
Chairperson Clemente?
Yes.
Before you proceed to consideration of the elements for the sign variance, the application is subject to review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So the first order of business is to make a determination of environmental significance, and again, just to review for the members and the record. Based upon a review of the application documents and the environmental assessment form submitted, the board members determined that, based on that record, there is no potential significant adverse environmental impact from the application, from the action, and you will adopt a negative declaration and conclude the seeker review. Alternatively, if you determine that there is the potential for significant adverse environmental impact from the proposed action, then you'll adopt a positive declaration and require further environmental impact analysis.
So given the record, given the application, I would say there'd be no significant environmental impact, and that the board should adopt a negative secret.
I will presume from that, that the motion for adoption of a negative declaration has been made by Chairperson Clemente.
Member Schmidt, second.
And Member Schmidt has seconded that motion and roll call vote. Member Steinbach?
Aye.
Member Schmidt?
Aye.
Member Shover? One more time, Member Shover? Okay, proceeding. Member Curran?
Aye.
And Chairperson Clemente?
Chairperson Clemente, aye.
But we do have a voiced affirmative vote of four members, so a seeker negative declaration's been adopted, and now the board to proceed on its deliberation.
Thank you. So we're asked to explain how no undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor a detriment to nearby properties created by granting the requested area variance. And I would begin by saying that there will be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood by granting the sign variance, as there are already commercial signs on the applicant's business structures. Due to the proposed new signs, there would be a reduction in the square footage, and also a reduction in the emitted light by granting this variance.
Member Schmidt, I agree 100%.
Member Curran, I agree.
Okay, we can then proceed to the second element, which is to explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance.
Member Steinbach, I agree with the business owner that these additions of signs are traditional signage associated with the business similar to this car wash. I think that they need to achieve certain goals for advertising, and this helps them do that.
This is Clemente, Chairperson, I would agree with that, right, that they're trying to become, get in order with their new logo. And then we look at the third element, which is to describe whether the requested area variance is substantial. And again, I think we should note that the total square footage proposed is 127.4 square feet, well below the allowed 300 square feet.
Member Schmidt, it's also, there's a lot of signs on that road already, and a lot of businesses have more than five signs, actually.
And then the fourth, we're to look to see if there's any environmental or physical change as caused by this proposed area variance. I would have to say no, that there would not be any impact to the environment due to this area variance if it was granted. And then lastly, if it's self-created, and of course, that it is, they have an objective they're trying to meet, and it's a worthy one.
Member Steinbach, I have no objection to their desire to add the additional signs, and of course, it is self-created.
Right. Right. So if there is no other further deliberation, we're to consider the balance between the benefit to the applicant as weighed against any detriment to the community at large, or the neighborhood in particular, and whether or not the zoning board of appeals determines to grant this requested variance.
Schmidt, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance. Member Shover, second it.
We'll take a roll call
Yes.
In favor?
Well, we'll do a roll call vote, Attorney Gilchrist speaking. There is a motion to approve the sign variance application pending, roll call vote. Member Steinbach?
Approve.
Member Schmidt?
Aye.
Member Shover?
Member Shover, aye.
Member Curran?
Aye.
And Chairperson Clemente?
Chairperson Clemente, aye. So the area variance is granted, allowing a total of five signs, where the Brunswick sign law allows for a total of two. Hey.
Okay.
Before we, before we go on to the next application, I'd like to explain why I didn't vote on the minutes, I lost my video, I had to shut it off and start it up again. I could hear, but I couldn't see, and I couldn't find any buttons.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. All right. Move down on our agenda to Courier area variances, there are two.
This is Lynn Courier, and I am present.
Thank you, and welcome, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you so much.
I'll re, I'll begin by reading the Notice of Public Hearing, as this is a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals at 6:15 PM, Wednesday, May 27, 2020. Wednesday, May 27th to 20/20 concerning the application for area variances submitted by Lynn Courier for property located at 9 Bleakley Avenue. Applicant seeks approval of a front line, front lot line setback for proposed accessory structure that is 25 feet where the Brunswick zoning law requires 35 feet front lot line setback. And also a variance to allow the proposed accessory structure to be located closer to the front lot line than the primary structure on the lot at this location. And then this again was published in the Troy Record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website and mailed to all owners of property adjacent within 300 feet. Ms. Courier, are there any changes to the application at this time that you'd like to explain to us? Or perhaps give us a little summary of the project?
Ma'am, no, there are no changes. The, the project is a, when I purchased a home about four and a half years ago, there was no garage on the property. So I am looking to purchase, a correction, to build a two-car garage with a carriage house. Pending any more questions, ma'am.
Thank you. So we can open up to the zoning board members if they have any questions for the applicant at this time. And then after, we would open up the floor to receive a public comment. Any other, any questions at this time?
This is Member Curran. I had a couple of questions. What is the height of the building?
Are you talking about the building that we would like to build?
Yes.
Stand by please.
So this is Chairperson Clemente looking at the application. Is it 24 feet?
We're looking at it right now. Is Chuck present for the meeting?
I believe so. He was with us earlier.
Okay.
This is Member Steinbach. My, my interpretation of the plans is that 24 feet is correct. And that would make sense with a two-story structure with probably eight or nine-foot ceilings and then the attic space above, so.
You're, I believe you're correct, sorry. Yes, yes, 24.
So then I have a question to the other board members. This is Member Curran again. That if this is an accessory structure that our zoning law says that it can't be more than 20 feet?
No, it's 30.
This is Steinbach again. I think that's correct.
No structure shall exceed 20 feet in height?
Member Scho, right, I believe that's correct.
Building Department, Chuck Golden, that is correct. The accessory structure height is 20 feet. The way that this township measures height is to the mean of the roof. In other words, not the peak, but the middle, the middle of the roof, from grade to the middle of the roof.
Attorney Gilchrist here. The Building Department is correct. Under the Brunswick zoning law, building height is not measured to the highest peak of the roof, but it does take an average, a mean of that roof. And Building Department, correct me if I'm wrong, that's basically taking the mean of the bottom of the roof to the peak, taking the average of that, and that constitutes the measurement for a height.
Yes, that is correct. This is Building Department Chuck Golden.
Is that where the 24 came from or did they measure that to the peak?
Attorney Gilchrist here. I do see Chuck Golden on the meeting. He appears to be looking at something, but we should defer to Chuck's review of the application documents for the height issue of the accessory structure.
Because on the, this is Member Curran again, because on the sketch that was provided, there does not appear to be a measurement at the bottom, the bottom of the trusses up to the, you know, the peak of the trusses. And I can't see what the other measurements are going from the base of the two stories.
This is Lynn Courier. Can I assume that Chuck is going to answer this question because I'm not sure.
This is Chuck Golden, Building Department, and I am looking to try to come up with an answer. I am hesitant to use a non-original drawing to, oh, I'm sorry, this is Building Department Chuck Golden, to scale out the numbers because of there is inherent errors in copying. But I will, I will come up a number using the, the copy that I have here.
So then Chuck, just to clarify, you're going to use the 24 for height? This is Chairperson Clemente asking. So Chuck, I was asking, this is Chairperson Clemente, are we using the 24 as the maximum height?
The, that is a good question. I'm trying to scout, I'm sorry, this is the, from the Building Department Chuck Golden again. This is something I am trying to find the scale to which I had on the original.
So while this is Chairperson Clemente, so while the Building Department is looking into this, Member Curran, did you have any other questions?
Yes, I had one other question. This is a 30 by 30-foot building and it's two stories. So do we, is that 1,800 square feet? Because each story is 900 square feet or is it 900 square feet? Because again, our rules say that the structure is not supposed to be more than 1,000 square feet if I'm reading that correctly.
This is Chuck Golden, the Building Department. I believe accessory structures max out at 1,500 square foot.
Okay. But if that's, I mean, it does, do you take in the total square footage of both floors or is it just the base?
I would take it. Chuck Golden again, the town of Brunswick, Building Department. It would be living space, my assumption would be both floors.
Then that's 1,800 square feet.
Chuck Golden again. Andy, do you agree with that assessment of the two floors of living space?
Attorney Gilchrist, that I will defer to the, to Building Department's interpretation that, that is, it's certainly reasonable and the Building Department is the initial party to interpret the zoning law. And so I think that interpretation stands on the record. Thanks, Chuck.
This is Lynn Courier. I'm not sure I understand what the answer is. As far as, you're, you're all talking about different things and I'm not sure of the answers. Is it 900, 900 feet living space or is it 900 or 900 plus 900, 1,800 because it's two floors? And knowing that we're not going to live on the bottom floor because that's a garage. I don't understand.
But this is an accessory, this is Member Curran. It is an accessory structure.
So then the answer is what? 1500, 18, I mean?
Attorney Gilchrist here. The Building Department does need to answer that. So Chuck, if we can be clear on the record, your determination as to allowable square footage for accessory structures in the Brunswick zoning law and the square footage for this proposed accessory structure for this applicant.
Member Sho, rapid question. What is the use of the carriage house?
And Member Shoever, are you directing that question to the applicant?
Yes.
I didn't understand the question.
What is, what is the use of the carriage house? Is there living space?
I think I understand the question is what is the living space?
What is the use, what is the, Member Shoever, what is the use of the carriage house?
This is Lynn Courier. It's a living space. What is the use of it? Apartment?
Ms. Courier, I have a question for you as well. This is Chairperson Clemente. Where would be the driveway to access the proposed garage? Would it be from the existing driveway?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
This is Member Curran. I have two questions for the applicant. You said that the carriage house will be used for living space, but will this be a rental property?
Yes, ma'am. That's what I plan on doing, yes.
Okay.
Actually, it's a family member rental.
Okay. And then my second question is, will any of the existing trees that are on your property there, will they be removed or any of the shrubbery or trees that are between the back of the building and your neighbor to the left? Any of that be removed?
Ma'am, I believe that we are going to have one tree removed and it's, it's a quite small one. Because there's one to the right that cannot be removed because I believe that is my, is that the water under there? Yeah. Yes, the well, the well, water well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So to recap, I believe we're still waiting a determination from the Building Department about the allowable space. In the meantime, are there any other questions from any other members?
I have a question for either Mr. Golden or Mr. Gilchrist. Is an apartment allowable in that zoning area?
The accessory or accessory apartment is allowable with a special use permit in an R15.
Right. Attorney Gilchrist here. So one thing that we have to make clear on the record that this is not simply an accessory structure, that there is a proposed apartment that does give rise to the need for a special use permit under the Brunswick zoning law. I'm not aware, can the Building Department can educate us on this? If the application for special use permit for the accessory apartment's been filed, generally what the, and that's an application, by the way, the special use permit application that is within the jurisdiction of the Brunswick Planning Board. And in such cases, the town has traditionally coordinated the review of those applications between the zoning board and the planning board, so they're reviewed concurrently. So we need to determine on the record if the special use permit application's been submitted.
This is Chuck Golden. I do not believe it has been. I am looking at accessory apartment special permit in R15. No, that has not been submitted. Ms. Courier, can you confirm?
I can confirm that. That's correct. Well, that's Lynn Courier. I can confirm that. But I will do it as soon as possible. If need be.
Attorney Gilchrist. It will be required. My suggestion on the record is there is the variance application that's been submitted, deemed complete by the zoning board of appeals and the public hearing has been opened. Another required review and permit for the application will be the special use permit. And as indicated, that's generally coordinated between the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals on the application. And so one option for the board to consider is to allow time for the applicant to submit the special use permit application, keep the public hearing open, get that application into the Planning Board, and then the two boards can coordinate on the application. There'll be one seeker determination that will be made. And then the boards can act on the application. There will also be the necessity for a public hearing in front of the Planning Board on the special use permit application. So that's, that's for consideration by the board on procedure.
Right.
Oh, this is Lynn Courier. I have a question. I guess we're still waiting for Charles Golden to give us an answer on the first question that we had before we can even move forward with the, the paperwork you're talking about.
And Ms. Courier, are you referring to the maximum height proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Chuck Golden from the Building Department. With a, with, my biggest issue with this is I just cannot make out the numbers. And I went out searching around for the microphone or the magnifying glass, but I come up with a, what should be, you're just going to be slightly over 20 feet on the mean for the 612 pitch in a, with a 30-foot run. 20.5. So is there such, is there such a thing as a height variance?
Attorney Gilchrist here, that, that would give rise to a supplement to the area variance. Attorney Gilchrist here, that that would give rise to a supplement to the area variance. Yes. There, it is in the nature of a height variance. The use as an accessory structure, in this case, an accessory structure with a proposed apartment is allowable in the district. So the use is allowed. The issue was going to be not just the location now, but also potentially the height. And I would like to say on the record that the Building Department should confirm that calculation based on original documents before any request for a variance for the height is submitted. There may not be the need for a height variance based on calculation from original documents. It appears to be quite close to what is allowed under the Brunswick zoning law. But in the event the height does exceed 20 feet, then the area variance can be supplemented seeking the area variance for height.
This is Chuck from the Building Department again. The height measurement is from grade and obviously we know what the grade is when you go into the driveway or the garage portion of it because your grade has to be at the floor. The back section, if the grade was higher, you would be able to get that number down fairly easily to the 20 feet. You have eight foot overhang with the decks, but there again, you'd like to maintain pitch away from the building. So I will confer with Mr. Kaula. And if I can't dig up the originals around here and confirm of his nine foot, his ceiling height for the garage as well as the, what looks like, I want to say eight foot or an eighth or a nine foot and an eighth. I wasn't certain of the second floor height. I assume it's eight foot and an eighth, but I can confirm with Mr. Kaula on that.
All right. So we have this variance application submitted. Then we go ahead and coordinate with the Planning Board for the special use permit. This is Ann Clemente, Chairperson, I guess directing the question to Attorney Gilchrist.
Attorney Gilchrist, that is one procedural option for the board to consider, given that there is the need for an additional application for the accessory apartment use. The board does have the option of maintaining the area variance application as submitted, subject to confirmation by the Building Department on height, roof height, height of the accessory structure. You've opened the public hearing that could remain open pending submittal of the special use permit application. And then the zoning board, yes, can coordinate with the Planning Board on the review of the complete application. And that would address the requested area variances as well as the requested special use permit for the accessory apartment use.
This is member Curran. We still have to deal with the issue of the square footage of the building.
This is Chuck Ollyn, Building Department. I think that's what Attorney Gilchrist was mentioning when he said area of building. I will, we are at 900 per floor. And I will dig into the zoning book and make sure that that floor area is, despite whether it's uses for parking of a vehicle or for actually living space.
This is member Curran again. I have one more question and I'm not even sure if this is an issue for the zoning board or if this would be handled through the Planning Board when they submit the application for the special use permit. But there's only one way up to the upstairs of the carriage house. Is that an issue as far as in and out in case of an emergency or fire? There's just the one staircase. There's no other way out of the upstairs apartment?
This is Chuck Ollyn from the Building Department. The code states that two forms of egress, as long as one of the bedroom windows is for a second floor window is above 5.7 square foot of clear opening. That is your second point of egress. So one, one set of stairs up is legal as long as you have another point of egress of 5.7 square feet.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Hey Chuck, this is Lynn Courier. Can I assume that that second egress, the sliding glass doors in one of the bedrooms would meet that standard? Or that requirement?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. This is Chuck Ollyn. And the answer is yes, it would.
All right. So procedurally, as we should go forward, so there is a need for the additional application for the accessory use. And we have a pending special use application. So perhaps we could keep the public hearing open and then plan to meet with the Planning Board for that area variance and the special use permit.
Attorney Gilchrist, Chairperson Clemente, that would be correct. And I think procedurally, the zoning board will acknowledge that the area variance application remains pending, that the public hearing was noticed and opened. And we should have a motion in a moment to keep the public hearing open. I think in this case, given the special use permit, that does need to be submitted for the accessory apartment. I think that motion should also indicate that the public hearing will be renoticed and continued once the special use permit application has been submitted and initially reviewed by the Planning Board. But for the applicant's information, the Planning Board does meet twice a month. The first and third Thursday of the month, which affords an opportunity to get the application in front of the Planning Board and start that review. The zoning board does meet once a month. So the ability to coordinate between the two boards in a timely manner presents itself because the Planning Board does meet twice a month. So Chairperson Clemente, I think the next order of business, if the board's inclined to do this, is a motion to keep the public hearing open, subject to submittal of the special use permit and that the public hearing on the area variances will thereafter be continued and renoticed.
So this is Chairperson Clemente. We can make that motion to keep the public hearing open, be renoticed and continued. And on the submittal of the special use application.
I would second that motion.
And thank you, member Steinbach.
Thank you.
May we do a roll call?
So Attorney Gilchrist, on the pending motion, let's start with member Steinbach.
Aye.
Member Schmidt.
Aye.
Member Shoever.
Aye.
Member Curran. Member Curran.
Sorry, I was muted. Aye.
And Chairperson Clemente.
Chairperson Clemente, aye. Thank you. Motion carried. So where does this leave our applicants?
Attorney Gilchrist, the applicant should continue to communicate with the Building Department. The Building Department will provide the applicant with the required special use permit application form. Also, the Building Department will confirm the building height issue and square footage issues for the accessory structure. So the next order of business, I think for the applicant is especially use permit application completed and filed for the Planning Board and continue to coordinate with the Building Department on the height and square footage issues.
Sir, this is Lynn Courier and I understand I will submit this as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Sorry, we couldn't come to an end that you wanted to see tonight, but going forward, you're in good hands with the Building Department. Thank you, Ms. Courier. All right. We'll move on to our last public hearing for tonight's meeting. And that is Terrence Frederick at 3697 New York State Route 2.
This is Chuck Ollyn from the Building Department. We had some connectivity problems, we'll say, with Mr. Frederick. I do see him up here. Or I do recognize his phone number up here. It might be just an issue of his inability to mute and unmute. But I do see him up here. So hopefully he will be able to respond. I am also attempting to get a hold of someone else that should be on here for new business, but is not. So hopefully Mr. Frederick will get unmuted and be joining us soon.
While we wait for that, shall I read the notice of public hearing? This is Chairperson Clemente.
Attorney Gilchrist here, I think we need to confirm that the applicant is present to respond to any board questions or comments before the public hearing is opened.
Hello.
I just unmuted the two phone numbers, not knowing who they were.
Okay. So Mr. Frederick, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Oh, you're, you're welcome. This is kind of nudity, so bear with me.
Of course, as long as you bear with us.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I will, this is Chairperson Clemente. We'll begin by reading the notice of public hearing. A notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Zoning Board of Appeals at 6:30 on Wednesday, May 27, 2020, concerning the application for area variance submitted by Terrence Frederick for property located at 3697 New York State Route 2. Applicant seeks approval to allow construction of a detached garage be located 18.2 feet from the front lot line, where the Brunswick zoning law requires a front lot line setback of 60 feet at this location. This was published in the Troy Record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website and mailed to all owners of adjacent property within 300 feet. Mr. Frederick, may I kindly ask you if there had been any changes to the application? And to request that you present a brief overview of the project?
No, there's been no, no change, no changes.
Okay, all right. The zoning board now will open the floor for receipt of public comment. And then we could have the zoning board members ask any questions. So is there anyone for the public who would like to speak for or against this application? You have the opportunity to do so now. All right. Just to review, one variance is being sought. It's the front lot line. 18.2 is proposed, 60 is required. For the record, the Rensselaer County Bureau of Economic Development and Planning has determined that the proposed proposal does not have a major impact on county plans and local consideration shall prevail. Well, hearing no public comment, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing. Would a member like to second?
Schmidt, I'll sign it.
Thank you, Schmidt. Members, do a roll call to see if we're all in favor of closing the public hearing.
Attorney Gilchrist, on the pending motion to close the public hearing, member Steinbach?
Member Steinbach, aye.
Member Schmidt?
Aye.
Member Shoever?
Member Shoever, aye.
Member Curran?
Aye.
And Chairperson Clemente.
Chairperson Clemente, aye. Thank you. The motion has been carried to close a public hearing. Zoning Board members, if you're prepared at this time to deliberate or to, we can stop and ask questions.
This is member Curran. I have a question. I was up looking at the site yesterday and there's a pad board in the proposed area.
Oh, that's where the garage is going to be.
Okay, then I have another question. With that, with it not being setback to 60 feet, is there a problem exiting that garage and with the highway being right there?
No, because there's going to be, I'm going to put in a blacktop turnaround just to the right of the property. And if you really look at the property, those state's markers are from years ago when the road was closer to the house. And in the 40s, they moved the road over to where it is now. So it, there's actually a lot more room than, than appears on a map between the garage and the, in the street.
Member Curran, do you have a question regarding site distance and upon exiting the driveway?
Well, I was just wondering, like, if you're trying to back out of the driveway, if that would be out of the, out of the garage, how, you know, if that presents any kind of a hazard because it's not set back 60 feet the way that it's supposed to be and it's, it's a significant less amount than what it should be.
No, there's, there's a turnaround where you can back into and you can park cars in front of the garage that has no, you're far away from the street itself. So there'd be no issues with backing out into the street.
This is Chairperson Clemente to the applicant. So the purpose of that blacktop turnaround would be so that you exit going forward onto the highway? Or would there be a possibility of backing out onto that highway?
Yeah, you'd be able to pull out forward. You'd have to because you got so many trucks that go up and down the road there that it'd be very difficult. No matter how long the driveway was to back out into it, you really shouldn't back. So the turnaround is very essential.
Thank you.
And the garage will also match the same decor as the house. So it'll, it'll look very nice together. Plus, the house was a foreclosed house was in, you know, the house was built in 1850 and it was almost to the wrecking ball and I brought it back to its original original way. It's very essential to have a garage here because of the weather and the hill and the mountains and mountains, and you really need, you really need a garage there to car in because of the winter times are so bad.
So just to recap, this applicant is seeking one area variance. And that is the front setback. Required is 60 feet, and the proposed is 18.2. And I believe, and perhaps I could be, this could be confirmed, that the, just for a perspective, the primary building has a front line distance of 15.7. Do you know that to be true, Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, the, the house, this actually sits, the garage sits behind the house. I mean, if you, if you ran a line across, it's a little further behind the, the frontage of the house. So it's not sticking out past the house. So it's in line with the, with the home.
Right, that's clear, that the proposed detached garage is in line with the existing primary structure setback.
Yes.
Chairperson Clemente. So this is Chairperson Clemente just asking if there are any other questions from the zoning board members at this time. We open the public hearing, we close the public hearing. Members are now asking questions to gain information for deliberation.
Member Schover, any questions?
Yes, Member Schover.
I have no questions.
Oh, fair enough. Thank you. All right. All right, so let's begin by looking at our elements. To begin with, or to ask to explain how no undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor a detriment to nearby properties granting, created by granting the area variance. And I would start by saying that the, the characteristic of the neighborhood would not be changed of the granting of this area variance, as neighboring properties also have garages and accessory structures on their property lots. Is a beautiful rehab and a historic neighborhood, I believe once known as Pleasant Valley. And in this little hamlet, the historic homes are built very close to Route 2, despite the information that the applicant provided that, back in the 40s, that the road was, was moved.
Yeah, years ago, the road actually was very close to the house, and then it dipped down behind the, immediately in front of the house, it started to turn behind the pump station, and then went out the other way. It was kind of a very windy road at one time. So there's actually, the appearance of, there's a lot more frontage than actually, you know, than, than it shows on the map, because it's just unused, you know, that property gained the appearance of being more property than it has in the front. It never changed the state line on it, it just left it. Actually, you can see the old road still up and down the street.
And then we're also asked to explain why the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance.
It's all bedrock. I can't, I can't dig it out. I need Clemente breakers, the gravel people to come in, but it wouldn't work. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible to cut the mountain out, then you'd have a big ledge.
Right. Mr. Frederick, thank you for your input. At this time, the members will consider these elements. And I would also agree with what I saw, which was the steep topography in the back of the applicant's yard, which makes it difficult to position the proposed garage in any other spot. I, I do think it's interesting that there is a concrete slab, a very formidable concrete slab already in place.
Yeah, that's already in place. We had to make sure that it would work.
And then if we're to move on, we're to describe whether the area variance is substantial. Again, 60 feet for an accessory building is required, and what is being sought tonight is a proposed 18.2.
The Member Steinbach, in terms of numbers, it sounds very substantial, but I think when you take into consideration the reason for the sighting of the garage, the underlying rock bed and so forth, and the real distance that we have from the structure, the proposed structure, and, and Route 2, especially when you take into consideration a house that's been there over 100 years, and the whole neighborhood, it really isn't substantial, in my opinion, anyway. Although numerically, the numbers would indicate it is substantial, I would argue that it's not.
Those are my thoughts exactly, because of the, when they had moved the road, they never moved the boundary lines.
Member Schmidt, it fairly, is fairly substantial, but it isn't as close as the houses, so that kind of negates it a little bit, too.
This is Chairperson Clemente. Thank you for your comments, membership, and Member Steinbach. We're then to ask, to explain how the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. So it appears that the construction is being done on a professional way. The refuse is piled into segregated piles. It looked like they have a purpose. I would say that there would not, it would not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And then to explain whether the difficulty is self-created.
It's self-created, because you really can't move the garage back to that building part.
Okay.
That's a very, very substantial increase behind the garage of real, I mean, boulders. You just can't, it would be almost like a wall if you could even get them out of there. You can't. Very difficult.
Well, well, thank you. So under type 2 action, this is a residential application. So under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, no further secret determination is required. We can look now to vote on the area variance. After considering the benefit between the applicant, as weighed against a detriment to community at large, or the neighborhood in particular, how would the zoning board determine to grant requested variance?
Member Schover, I'm making a motion to grant the variance as proposed.
Thank you, Member Schover.
Member Steinbach will second.
Thank you, Member Steinbach. Shall we call roll to see if we're all in favor?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist, motion to grant the area variance as requested. Roll call vote, Member Steinbach?
Aye, Member Steinbach, aye.
Member Schmidt? Member Schmidt, need to unmute? Member Schmidt, if you could indicate your vote by a thumb up or thumb down, we can see you, but we can't hear you. That's indicating a thumb up, so Member Schmidt is a vote yes. Member Schover?
Member Schover, yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
And Chairperson Clemente?
Chairperson Clemente, yes, thank you. So Mr. Terrence Frederick, I would can, encourage you to continue the coordination with the Building Department as you see on this project.
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize for I'm in Troy here. I was on my way over, because I wasn't sure I was going to actually get on with the phone, but Chuck walked me through it, and it worked out all good.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure with dealing with the town of Brunswick. Very nice place to live, very nice place to work in.
We would agree. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good night now. Thank you.
Good night.
Member Schmidt, can you hear me now?
Yes, are you, if we can hear Member Schmidt, I can hear Member Schmidt clearly.
I lost it again. My screen went fluey. Member Steinbach, it went fluey? It, it did something. I don't know what. I think it went fluey. Either that or Polito made it happen.
We're glad, we're glad you're with us now. That concludes the public, the three public hearings. We're on to five new business applications.
Chairperson Clemente, there is one other agenda item before the new business applications, and that's an update on the application for use variance by Blue Sky Towers.
Hi, this is Chuck Oldham, the Building Department. I was incorrect, and Chairperson Clemente asked if they were on, and I told her no. So when Dave Brennan was on, when I saw his smiling face on our Zoom meeting, I conferred with Wendy, and she says, oh, yes, they are on. So my apologies to Ann for the misinformation I gave you, but the, the, Mr. Brennan would like to make a presentation.
Certainly. Thank you. No problem. All right. Welcome, Mr. Brennan. Would you like to give that presentation now?
Certainly, Dave Brennan with the Law Firm of Young Summer on behalf of the applicant, Blue Sky Tower, AT&amp;T, and Verizon Wireless. Excuse me, I'm already losing my voice 30 seconds in. I gave an update presentation to the planning board last evening. I'm just going to pause for a second. Can everyone hear me okay before I keep going?
Member Schmidt, I can.
Member Schover, I can.
Very good, thank you. So it's Dave Brennan continuing. So as, as the zoning board will, will recall, we did a joint public hearing on January 16 with the planning board. There were a number of public comments at that time. We were intending, by recollection, to come in for your, your March meeting and continue the discussion, and obviously, life has been, been put on hold or on pause. And so your March meeting was off, your April meeting was off, and now we're, we're in May. And so I will have responses to those public hearing comments. I have the letter largely drafted. I'm just waiting on some additional material from our consultants, and I'll be submitting that in the near future, certainly well in advance of your next meeting. But I wanted to take the opportunity, because the, the town was, as compared to some others I'm dealing with, proactive in getting you back up and running to have these meetings. In, in the same vein, I don't want to, I can see here, here, your agenda is, is quite heavy tonight, so I won't go on and on, but I want to run through a couple of things and ask to come back to the next meeting and follow up on these preliminary discussions. So the first thing is, I will be responding to those public comments. I'll get that out in advance, so you can review it before your next meeting. I've been in discussions with, with Mr. Gilchrist. We do have the FCC shot clock running. We've previously extended it, and that extension was somewhat forgotten, because no one could do anything. So we're, we're in the process of extending the shot clock. I say that by way of update. There is no intention of complaining about this. Certainly, the town of Brunswick has been processing the application, and so we appreciate, appreciate that, and we're all doing the best we can in this, in this new time. And then finally, I did submit a, a letter that's, that's been distributed, and basically, it's dated May, May 5. And what we did do in the intervening time is we went out and we did a drone fly, and we flew it at three locations, and Mr. Polito is, is on his way scrolling down to the, to the pictures. If you could go to the page two of that letter, please. Thank you. So you'll see on this aerial photo in front of you, there's three locations. Location one is in one of the existing lease areas that we've always shown. Location three is in the, the primary, or just off the primary location, which would require 150-foot monopole. And then the consultants flew also the drone at location two. And as you'll recall, the high point of this area is basically where the tilt field is, just to the western left of, of, of number two is the high point, and it slopes down considerably towards Crick Road. And we didn't fly the drone at what I would call location four, which is much closer to Crick Road. That was the location that we've previously discussed, which would require a 240-foot tall tower with painting and lights on it. And so we, we thought that that was, was demonstrated to be significantly visible in the balloon fly and photo simulations, and so we didn't focus on that. But what I wanted to do is go through the, the videos from the drone fly. So it's a, it's a nice high-def drone video. And this one that Mr. Polito is going to start running is at 80 feet. So this is location one. Right in front of you right now is the Collins property to the north, the Red Barns. And we're basically, the drone is held, holding itself steady at 80 feet, and we're panning around, and you'll see coming into view some of the backs of the houses. We're in the, in the treetops right here of Golden Eagle Court. And as it continues to pan around the, the compass, you'll see coming in to view is the houses on Eagle Ridge Drive. That's the McDonald House with the pool. They spoke at the public hearing right there in the middle. And as we continue to go around, you'll see coming into, to view the O'Brien House as we get, it's not quite there yet. The O'Briens came and spoke at the public hearing. Theirs is off in the distance. It's not quite in the middle of the screen yet. It's right about there now, and you'll see. And there's another better view of it, but basically, then you can see going down to Crick Road in the video. All of these videos are hosted. There's a link to them online, so you can look at them at your leisure. What we're trying to show in this video and the next one is, at these two locations, this would be, would be able to be hosted as a stealth tree and take advantage of the tree screening, as compared to the 150-foot monopole. That is the, is one of the, the next videos coming up. And so, Mr. Polito, if you could go to the next one for us. So this is the new location. You're looking at Eagle Ridge Drive, and now we're rotating around. The house that's going out of the view is at the top of Eagle Ridge, and you're coming around. And eventually, as it rotates a little bit further, you'll catch the O'Brien House is coming into the field of vision now. And what happens is the, the tower is now, will be And what happens is, the, the tower is now, will be out of the, the direct view of, there's their house right there, coming into view with their pool. In the trees, you'll see it more demonstrated in the last video, is not in the direct line of sight out of their backyard anymore, and this was fortunately done with leaf-off conditions. And again, you'll see the, you can get a good glimpse of the, the steep terrain drop-off as you go down towards Crick Road, and which drives the, the tower heights to maintain a relative parity of the antennas to, to provide coverage. So, we'll rotate around a little bit further, and then you'll see the, the Collins property, Mr. Collins spoke at the public hearing, that's the red outbuildings and barn and house in the distance. And as you'll see in the next video, from the 150-foot location, you can see what the balloon fly was demonstrating and what they were, they were speaking at the public hearing that they didn't like, is that it basically puts at 150 feet the tower right between the two houses, in a sense of a crossfire. Here, this location is being run at 90 feet, and the idea would be that you could do a stealth tree in the stand of trees. It would have to be taller with the ornamental top, but you could take advantage of the leaf-on conditions. And, Mr. Polito, if you could go to the last one for us. So this is the 150-foot location directly in front of us. Although it's, it's, uh, more than 750 feet away is the McDonald House that they spoke at the, the public hearing, you're seeing the top of Eagle Ridge Drive, as we rotate around, it's coming in to the, the frame in in a moment here will be the O'Brien Residence, and you'll get, you'll see, this is where, if, Mr. Polito, if you could pause it for a second, you can see when we did the balloon fly, if you go back and look at the, at, at the balloon fly simulations, one was taken from their backyard, and it basically shows probably nearly the full height of the, the 150-foot monopole, because they've got a, a nice cleared spot in the backyard with their pool, and it's looking directly out of it right there, thank you. And so if we keep panning around, it'll eventually, it'll rotate towards the east. And as you look at these in your leisure, in the upper right is the, is the compass showing it, what compass direction we're, we're on, and at the bottom is the altimeter showing it's holding steady at 150 feet above ground level. And again, in this video, you'll get a pretty good sense of, although it's further back off the top of Eagle Ridge Drive, that significant drop-off in the back, that, that is the tension of trying to keep the antennas where they need to be and keeping the tower low, and coming into the picture here again is the Collins Residence, if Mr. Polito can pause it for a second. Again, you can see where, you know, it's basically at 150 feet, we're right between the two, and then we're also right out the back, you know, looking at, basically in a crossfire between the McDonald, the Collins, you know, Brian residences, and so what we've tried to do is to give some additional data for the boards to review with a, a goal or an aim of, certainly not at this meeting, but trying to get to see if there's a consensus as to which of these locations are feasible, and Mr. Polito, if you want to just run the last few seconds, and, and then I'll wrap up. One of the things we did do coming out of our last meeting is we also did look at what I'll call the west side of the national grid right away, there's a, a large piece of property on the backside that was suggested at some point in our discussions, and we did run a title review on that, and it's actually listed for sale, the owners would not grant us any ability to do it under any contingencies to see if we could get approvals, but even more troubling is that everything that's come out of that fairly recent subdivision has deed restrictions in it, limiting the use of the properties to residential only, and so for that reason, we're foreclosed from, from using that piece of property. And so at this point, we're, we're focused on the Zuki property. Certainly, there were some other questions about locations down be, behind Mrs. Zuki's house, and we will provide that in response to comments, but that, that requires a tower again of about 240 feet because of the, the drop-off in terrain. But keeping with my, my initial promise, is, that to, to keep the reintroduction of this on the brief side, certainly dependent on what the board wants to do and talk about tonight, I wanted to just go through these videos with you and ask you to, to think about those, and if we could stay on the agenda for your June meeting, we'll have the response to comments back, and, and then we could talk about if there's any sort of preference or relative strengths or weaknesses of the proposed locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. So just to confirm, this is Chairperson Clemente, that these videos are available on the town website?
Dave Brennan speaking, yes, they are, there's actually, it's a link to our consultant's website because of the, the, their mass of like 150 megabytes, so they are, there's a link, that's my children crying. There's a link and they are available, but it's linked on the website.
So, we look forward to your response to the public comments before our next meeting in June, I don't see why it would not be a problem to put you on that agenda. Anyone has any questions at this time, otherwise I would ask Attorney Gilchrist, procedurally how the board should proceed?
Member Steinbach, I just have one request, I'm sure it would happen anyway, but just to get it on the record that I would like copies of the response letter get gotten to me somehow, mail, delivered, whatever. I'd like to read that before the next meeting.
So just to confirm, Member Steinbach, you would like a hard copy or could it be digital?
Digital's fine, if you, if, well, put up, if people would on the board, sure, yeah. I just want to be able to read it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Attorney Gilchrist here, hearing no further questions or comments from the board members, procedurally, the application remains pending in front of the zoning board, the applicants presented this update with the information provided, they will be submitting formal written responses to comments. Again, confirm for the record that both the zoning board and the planning board are utilizing LeBerge engineers as retained planning review consultant for the application, so those responses to comments will also be reviewed, and Ron LeBerge will be available for the meeting at which those responses are discussed. I think for tonight, procedurally, it's consideration of maintaining the application on your June agenda. And Chairperson Clemente, with your authorization, I will continue to work with applicants' counsel on extending the federal shot clock.
Sounds good, thank you for that summation, it, it sounds like a good way to go forward, thank you.
Okay, Dave Brennan, thank you for your time and attention this evening, and we look forward to seeing you in June, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Right. So... I was, um... So thank you, Mr. Polito, for the way that you're putting up your shared screen. I'm just gonna look, uh, so usually how sometimes we do it is the, the date that the application was submitted. That would make Kyle Smith's application first to review as new business, if we might. And this application is seeking one variance, it's an accessory structure that would be close to the road, closer to the road than the proposed new construction of a primary structure. So if Mr. Kyle Smith is with us?
I am here.
Thank you, welcome. Perhaps you could give us an overview of your project while we review and look at the application papers?
Certainly, so I've heard a few area variances tonight with accessory structures, I'm going a little backwards differently. I am currently, my current residence is the garage barn that is close to the road. When I built that as a young single man 10 years ago, I put an 800-square-foot living space into that. I have since married the girl from next door, and we've had a child, and that space is not sufficient. So we're trying to build a house on the remaining 75 acres of property that we have, it will be further back from the road than the building we're living in now, we want to just bring that back to what it should be as an accessory structure, just a garage, remove the living space from that and build the house behind, further back. It's a smallish house, 1900-square-foot house. I got, hopefully you guys received, I, I went to all the neighbors and got signatures from everyone that everyone, no one was, no one is opposed to this project. I was, you know, as, as you know, obviously, we were slated for March, and of course, it's out of everyone's control what's happened, but I'm hoping that maybe it's within our control to expedite this in some way, if it's possible. I don't know how many of you have children, I assume many of you, but we are currently living in a one-bedroom space with an eight-month-old, and it is trying, to say the least, if you can appreciate that. I'm not sure, uh, the, I'm not sure what else to say.
Yeah, well, thank you, no, you, you said, you said a lot, and, uh, congratulations on being blessed with that eighth month.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So, uh, similar to what you, if you, I'm not sure if you were on earlier, but, um, so at this meeting, at this May meeting, we are to review the application documents, get the little summary from you, and then we, the zoning board meets once a month, so we'll, this group of people will meet again in June to compare the elements and make a determination whether or not to grant the requested variance.
Okay, is there?
That's kinda, that's kinda how we roll.
Certainly, certainly, I, I understand that, um, I was just, I know this, this meeting is a special meeting, correct?
It, it is, in regards to...
When would the June meeting be? Just, what, because this one seemed, before, we were supposed to be March 16th prior, before?
That's right, so we meet the third Monday of each month.
Correct, so...
This is Chuck Olden, it would be June 15th.
June 15th.
So it is, so it's less than a month to the next meeting, as it is?
Looks like that.
Okay.
Right. So Chuck, while you're there, I came up in a previous application, the maximum height. So I guess that was an accessory structure, we're looking at this as a primary structure. So... Never mind.
This is Chuck from the Building Department, to move things wrong, Kyle, I would query the Department of Health at the county and make sure that you have your certificate of construction for your septic system, as well as get a set of plans for your building as quick as possible, and a driveway permit in for your, uh, your new structure. The, the request of the driveway permit, you will build, will be using the existing driveway, but there, due to the length of the driveway, there's gonna be, have to be some special, I can't say considerations, but you're going to be needing a turnoff for the, what was, could be considered over 300-foot or a private, a private drive, so for fire department access.
Okay.
Those things, so you will, you keep, you know, keep the ball moving forward.
Set of plans for the house, which I, which I do have, driveway plans, and then, uh, and you said also, yeah, septic plans.
So, it'd be an ideal time to get a perk test done, because it's really dry.
It's, um, that's all been, that's already taken care of, it's all done.
Okay, and so you have that permit to construct in hand?
I... No, no, not yet, but I have, I have plans for it, we've done perk tests, I have, I have plans for the septic and everything.
Good.
That's, that sounds good, Mr. Smith, so you have a few things to do before we meet again on June 15th at 6:00 PM, we'll have a public hearing, so a notice will go out. In addition to being in the newspaper, on the town signboard, and on the website, your neighbors within 300 feet will also be noticed of that public hearing, which will take place on June 15th, and then the, on hearing any comments, having any more questions, gaining any more information, the zoning board members will have the opportunity to deliberate, and then make a determination on your requested area variance.
Excellent.
Great.
All right, thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, one last thing, I'm sorry, before you go.
Yep, of course.
Yep, do, do we have your permission to look at this site?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
Attorney Gilchrist here, Chairperson Clemente, the public hearing for June 15th on that application will be 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you. All right. Moving along. We have Linda A. Knight, address 559 Lansing Road. And here we can confirm with the applicant and the Building Department, what is the requested variance?
This is Chuck Olden from the Building Department. I understand that Pat unmuted the two phone numbers that were on there, I recognized one as Mr. Frederick initially. The second number I did not recognize, and I am feverishly trying to get ahold of the Knights, because I don't believe that they are on right now, so I would like if we could to delay this permit to be, or this application to be last, and I will continue to try to contact them.
Of course, of course. Chairperson Clemente will then move on to our third new business of this evening, and that is Frederick Stafford at 681 Farm to Market Road. And this is an area variance.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, well...
Frederick Stafford.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome.
And Chuck, again, um, I'm a little uncertain about the requested variance, is it a front setback?
This is Chuck Olden, Building Department, this is, uh, this is a classic accessory structure in front of the primary, he meets all setbacks.
Okay. All right. Mr. Stafford, if you'd like, if you want to kind of give us an overview of your project?
This is Frederick Stafford, can you hear me, Chairperson Clemente?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. This is a, uh, basically a barn, the plans have been submitted, and that's the best way to describe it. I have also indicated my intended use. And, um, that would be for storage of light equipment and, uh, other, uh, storage, just miscellaneous storage, and a small workshop for hobby projects, and a place where I could work on my car during rainy weather. I don't intend to plummet or even put electricity in the building. I don't want to get too far into it unless you have specific questions.
So, Mr. Stafford, in the application, you're showing us drawings of a design called the cider mill, is that what you're proposing to put on your property?
Oh, that'd be nice, wouldn't it? No, I, I don't, it's not a... No, I, I don't, it's not a cider mill.
No, no, I'm sorry. It's, I understand. It's, just to clarify, the drawing that you're presenting, the drawing is called the cider mill, is that correct?
That's correct. Yep, that's correct.
Yes, it would be nice to have a little cider mill. Well, the application appears complete for the purpose of holding a public hearing. I would ask, Mr. Stafford, if you would kindly give permission to the zoning board members to look at the proposed construction site?
I would like to be there to answer questions, otherwise it might be a little confusing. But I certainly would, I certainly welcome the board members to visit and inspect the site.
Right. We would ensure that we would practice social distancing and, if inclined, wear face coverings?
No, that's fine.
All right, and?
I'm not really, not really concerned about that. I'm sure that's, I'm sure you're concerned about that. I'm, I'm more concerned with just being able to clarify any questions that you have while you're here.
Understood. So then, would the best method be to knock on the front door?
How would you normally, what's your, what's your usual MO? Do you just, do you send a letter? Do you send an email? Do you call?
Yeah, no, historically, I've just kind of knocked on the front door to see if anyone was available to speak with me at that time. Oftentimes, during visits, what's going on or what's proposed to happen is very self-evident and I can kind of figure it out without the assistance of the, of applicant being present, but?
Um, well, I, I, I like to, I like to know when people are on my property. I like to be there when they're, when they're on my property, unless someone's delivering the mail or someone has, you know, I, I would like some sort of notification. I think that's entirely reasonable to request.
Of course. Shall it be a phone number? Shall we call you?
Yes, that would be fine.
All right, and on the application, I have 518?
Chairperson Clemente?
Sorry?
That, that's okay. Attorney Gilchrist here. We'll just coordinate the phone number through the Building Department?
Fair enough. Is that reasonable to you, Mr. Stafford?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. There aren't any other, there are no other questions at this time. We'll move on.
Chairperson Clemente, one issue, if the application is complete, is the board inclined to schedule the public hearing?
Yes, I believe so. So we, seems that we have a 6 o'clock. Could we possibly schedule this for 6:15?
Attorney Gilchrist, that's, that's in order, thank you.
All right, thank you. So that would be, Mr. Stafford, for your information, June 15th at 6:15 for a public hearing.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you then, or see you sooner. We'll move on to our fourth application for tonight under new business, and that would be Usman Rashid for 2422 10th Avenue, pardon me, for Pauling Avenue in Troy. Nope, pardon me, again, correction, for Bellevue Road in Troy.
No, Mark Danskin here.
Okay, Mark.
I'm representing Usman Rashad of 793 Pauling Avenue, Town of Brunswick.
There we go. Thank you for that address correction.
Absolutely.
And I believe you're seeking two variances?
An area vari, I'm sorry, an area variance for the front set, or I'm sorry, the rear setback and a front setback along Lakeview Avenue. I'm on a corner lot.
All right. Would you kindly give us a little brief overview of the project?
Certainly, love to. The property is located on the east side of Pauling Avenue. It's just south of the city of Troy line, about 200 feet inside Brunswick and outside of Troy. It's located on a corner lot, Lakeview Avenue and Pauling Avenue. It was formerly the home of a six to eight unit apartment building that was in very poor condition. I've submitted three maps. Two of, one was the survey when the original apartment building was still, before it was raised. A second map showing the proposed new building and the remaining portions of the raised building. That's the map I'd like you to look at. The hash mark is the remains of the building and our proposed building will be entirely inside the old building or within the setback lines as required. The old building was three feet off of Lakeview and actually encroached on the property line by less than a half a foot in the rear. The proposed building would be inside the property line and inside that wall in the rear. It would be inside the wall on Lakeview Avenue. It would, the proposed building would be 30 feet off of Pauling Avenue and the rear corner of the proposed garage would be 10 feet off that, I guess it's the southerly property line. The property is located in a B-15 zone. It's got a 30-foot rear, 30-foot front and 10-foot side setbacks. So we're looking to get a variance on the rear and the Lakeview portion of the front. The building has been raised. Only the back wall and a bit of the wall on Lakeview remain. And I would appreciate it if you would visit the site. So my client proposes a 59 by 36 foot garage and a 21 by 38 foot office space where he plans on repairing and selling used automobiles. The, the, if you wanted to get into it a little bit here, the third map I submitted shows stacked parking. The required parking would be five based on, you know, two employees and customer parking and then you got your, you know, the rest would be showroom, I guess. I think I'll wrap it up with that.
Thank you. Does your client have this business in any other area of Troy?
He has it in Albany. He lives in Water Valley and right now he's running a shop in Albany. I have not been there. I could, I could get you the address if you want.
That's okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Danskin at this time? All right, the application appears complete for the purpose of holding a public hearing, which will be at our next meeting in June, June 15th at, say, 6:30 PM?
June 15th?
Yes.
6:30.
6:30.
Very good.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having me and if I may say, I think your meeting is run quite well tonight.
All right. But we're moving through, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night. Application to consider for new business submitted by Dave Leon at the address 658 664 Huzick Road. It's a variance for parking as it's proposed within a zoning district R9. So representative for Mr. Leon here tonight, who could provide first an overview of this project?
Good evening, board. This is Jamie Easton with MJ Engineering. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So? Disregard the totally runky subtitle underneath my name, that's, I don't work for them, I work for MJ. My wife works for the law firm there. But if I can share my screen, it may be a little easier for me. The, the host would have to allow me to, if the town would allow me to, to share my screen, I'll kind of walk through this. If not, I'll just go through the, the presentation based on the, the screen that's up.
Yeah, we didn't give permission to when I started the meeting for people to have their screen, so.
Okay, e- easy enough. So as we're, as the board's looking at the, the map on the screen, you have Hoffman's Car Wash to the top of the page. You have the proposed, you have the existing Planet Fitness kind of in the center of the project site. You have the proposed Aldi's and Wendy's to, between the existing Planet Fitness and, and, wow, in Hoffman's. To the, really the south or towards the bottom of the page, there is the proposed KFC. And you have, just to the south of that would be Hillcrest Ave. And the currently built Cumberland Farms directly to the south. As part of this project, we have, there is the zoning line and a part of our parking lot goes over that zoning area. And as you take a look at that, that's the little hatch area in orange towards the bottom there. If, a little bit farther down below the, no, if you go to the KFC building, you'll notice right, if you just take your cursor right down to the very bottom, you'll see a little orange area that has dumpster and things like that. That area right there, which is approximately a little over 2,000 square feet, is the area that we are encroaching, the parking lot is encroaching on the R9 zone. As you look at it, it's a very small area, but the reason why we had to do that was for a couple of reasons. One is because originally the plan was to have the KFC building moved much closer towards Huzick Road. During the planning process and during concept review, the planning board wanted the building pushed back to get the circulation around for the drive-through for that building. And, and the town planning board also wanted increased parking. This area of proposed parking that's kind of highlighted in orange there encroaches on the R9 zone. Now, parking in an R9 zone is allowed with, with certainly a structure located. There's other things in the zoning code that allow for parking that's required in that. But in our case, I guess our understanding of this, why we have to obtain a use variance is because we don't have a principal building within that R9 zone. So that's where my understanding is. So as you look at this small parking lot area from a, I'll say from an impact point of view, you could see how relatively close it is towards the existing zoning line, the B-15, and how close it is to the Cumberland Farms, just to the south of it. If you scroll down a little bit farther, you'll see the house that's directly to the south of us. And as part of our application, we actually noted the distance in there. The existing Cumberland Farms is actually closer to that house than the proposed expansion area if the zoning board grants the variance for the proposed parking lot. That, the, the Cumberland Farms is actually closer than that area there. So we're trying to provide, you know, separation distance and meet some of the planning board's requirements as we've gone through this. And we've kind of ended up with this little triangular area, which is roughly 2,000 square feet of impact that we needed to do. So that's really the, why we're here tonight and hope that the board can set the public hearing for, on June 15th. And if you have any general other questions, I hope I can answer them.
It's difficult for me to see right now, but could you kind of explain what is that green area beyond the proposed parking site in the orange?
So that, that green area is all part of the applicant's property. In there, we, we anticipate putting a stormwater management area to meet New York State DEC requirements. And the green area, whether we keep trees in there or whatever, it, it's just, it will be green in nature inside. We're going to try to keep as many trees behind the house as much as possible. But until we get to the final design of the site plan, we'll then determine how much space we really, how much existing trees that we can maintain in that area.
Thank you. Chairperson Clemente?
This is Chuck Olton from the Building Department. Jamie, I understand that there's a couple of parcels in there that you don't own yet. Where are they located? Are they in the middle of the retention pond or are they along a border?
The, everything that you see in green and colored and everything else on this map, the applicant owns. The only space that he does not currently own is a 60 by 60 foot area, which is, if you go to the back, right behind KFC, right there you stop, that parcel of land, he, the applicant does not own. Certainly, he's in conversations with the applicant about purchasing that small piece of land. But the, the applicant and his attorney are speaking to family representatives. The owner of that parcel has recently passed and now the ownership of that land is in the family with three entities living in three different states. So it's been difficult to coordinate that. So we don't, we've taken that parcel out because the applicant is trying to purchase that piece of land. But obviously, we don't need it for the ZBA application or from a site plan standpoint of view during our site plan review process. So we've just taken it out, so.
With that said, Jamie, is the parking area 10 foot off of that line?
The parking area off of that line is, is probably closer than 10 feet. That is correct.
So will variants be required for that as well?
I, I will have to double check that if, if an area variance is required for the, the 10 foot setback, we would have to put a supplement application in for that also to be there, for that, just around that parcel, yes. I think portions of it, we would hit it, portions of it, the 10 foot, we would exceed it, so.
Do we need that piece of information before acting on this area variance? This is Chairman Clemente, perhaps to Attorney Gilchrist?
Attorney Gilchrist here. What I would suggest to the board is the area variance, or strike that, the use variance request for the parking area is part of the overall action. As Mr. Easton stated, it's in front of the planning board for site plan review. The applicant has appeared in front of the planning board a couple of times on concept review. I think it'd be appropriate in, for this application, certainly to coordinate again with the planning board. There, there would be an anticipated public hearing in conjunction with the site plan review. As we've discussed at the planning board, there is potential town board action in conjunction with a proposed road. action in conjunction with a proposed road construction. And that the use variance for the parking is, is part of the overall action. I would anticipate that the boards might consider one joint public hearing rather than multiple public hearings on this application so that both boards, again, could hear public comments. And I think that's appropriately coordinated with the planning board. And I can report to the zoning board that the, the planning board hasn't addressed the scheduling of a public hearing yet. Given the, the state emergency orders and the, and the virus, the, the planning board likewise had a hiatus on meetings and only recently started their Zoom meetings. And Mr. Easton, I, I would presume you're going to be back in front of the planning board in short order to, to present on the site plan?
That is correct. Our anticipation was to make application sometime, hopefully after the ZBA hearing, if it went well, after June 15. We are progressing with the plans and, and with DOT on this project. So we were, we were anticipating a mid-June submission to the town for, you know, for detailed construction drawings, stormwater reports, sewer report, all that detailed information.
Well, I do have a concern about the segmenting part of the action and having the zoning board proceed on that without the overall project review in front of the planning board. I would think that's an issue that I'd like to discuss with the applicant's counsel.
Andy, this is Jamie Easton from MJ. I certainly understand that, I've done that before, where you have these multiple things going on in a coordinated review of, of an application. So I certainly don't object to, to that. I just, and I'm fine with that, so.
I think, Jamie, on this, again, Attorney Gilchrist here, I think on this application, it probably is, is best not just for the boards, but also for the applicant to ensure that coordination happens.
Jamie Easton, I would 100% agree.
Very good. So with a coordinated review of this application, we will schedule, could we, could we say today that we're going to schedule a joint meeting with the planning board for a public hearing?
My, Attorney Gilchrist here, my suggestion would be, allow me the opportunity to coordinate with the applicant's counsel that the site plan application be submitted by the applicant to the planning board. And then we address a, a coordination and as the chairperson suggests, a joint meeting for purposes of a joint public hearing, I think that makes sense. So I think it's premature to, to do that at this point.
Okay, sure. So, so we'll leave it that we allow you the opportunity to coordinate with the applicant's counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Gilchrist, again, it would be appropriate if any of the zoning board members did have any initial questions or comments for Mr. Easton.
Member Schmidt, I don't have any questions or comments right now, but it, it's an awful lot to take in, I've got to study it for a while.
Member Shover, I have no questions at this time.
Member Curran, I have no questions.
Nor do I, Steinbach, please.
Okay, then, well, hearing no other questions. Thank the applicant's representative for being with us here tonight going over the project. I think like Member Schmidt said, it's a lot that we can go over and study and await the coordinated effort with the applicant's counsel with the zoning board members attorney, Mr. Gilchrist.
Chuck Olent, Building Department. I just, just one quick question for Jamie regarding the parking spaces in the drive-through for Wendy's, they're okay, or I'm sorry, for Kentucky Fried Chicken. They are okay with eight?
Yes, they are okay with eight, eight is their prototypical.
Okay, because I'm just having memories of Taco Bell and their, their number was 10.
Every, every one of the, Jamie Easton from MJ, every one of the, the national tenants have different requirements. If you look at the Wendy's up on top, they really wanted a bypass lane, and they, they didn't care about queuing, they, they were, they were okay with six. Starbucks, for example, wants between eight to 10. And if we ever get a Chick-fil-A in the Capitol District, they require stacking of over 20. So every national tenant actually has a different requirement for that. But KFC was okay with the eight, eight queue on their parking.
Chuck Olent, thank you, Jamie.
No problem.
Okay. Well, thank you, any other questions? Right. All right. So before we wrap up, I, I just have a quick quote. This is from the Director of Planning and Economic Development in Colony. And I think it sums up what we're trying to do tonight. And, which he said, "We understand that if our work stops, we risk slowing down projects and causing risks to our local community and economy. Important for people to know that during a crisis, their government is still working for them. This crisis has brought so much uncertainty, I think it's important to adapt and respond." And I think tonight's zoning board appeals meeting certainly demonstrates that.
I agree, this is Chuck Olent, I agree with that fully. I just want to notify you that the Knights have logged on and they are available. If, Pat, if you could unmute the 28, the, the number that starts with, well, let's say the last digit is, last two digits are 69.
All set.
Thank you, Mr. Polito.
Thank you.
This is Ann Clemente, chairperson, wanted to welcome, welcome you tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. So if I understand correctly, Ms. Knight, you're proposing an accessory structure to be in front of a primary structure? Could you kindly give an overview of your project to the board members tonight?
Well, we're just looking to add on to an existing additional garage, which is 12 by 30, making, adjoining this building, which would also be 12 by 30, in our wooded area. It's not exactly in front of the house. It's kind of, I don't know whether, what you'd want to call it. To me, it's like perpendicular, it's, it's not blocking the front of my house. It's in a wooded area, just for storage, that's what we're looking to do.
Yeah, thank you. So just to confirm then, Chuck, at the Building Department, this is chairperson Clemente. Is, is that the correct area variance that's being sought? Would be an accessory structure in front of a primary structure, the setbacks are fine?
This is Chuck Olent, Building Department, yes, that is correct. The, the setback of the main structure is, you can see by what Mr. Polito has up there now, was 182 feet. And currently, the garage storage building is at 120. So it is, it is in front of it, it is a bit of an optical illusion because of the way that the highway goes and the way it is set up. It is in a very wooded and secluded area with visual impact to one neighbor in, you know, in the, in the fall and winter when most of the leaves are down. I am certain that the Knights will allow you to go and take a look if, if you so desire.
Certainly, that would be no problem.
Thank you, thank you for granting us that permission. So. So having that clarification, thank you, Mr. Golden from the Building Department. As chairperson, I would say that this application appears complete for the purposes of holding a public hearing, which would be on June 15th. That is a Monday at 6:30. And that note.
Attorney Gilchrist here, Chairperson Clemente, we, we have the, a one public hearing already scheduled for 6:30.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this, I think, would be for 6:45.
6:45 it is then, thank you. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Mr. Danskin's client is for 6:30, thank you. Great. So Ms. Knight, at that time, before then, there'll be a notice going out to your adjacent neighbors 300 feet from your property, notifying them of this public hearing that if they want to come to speak for or against the application, they'll have the opportunity to do that. And then the zoning board members will have the chance to ask you any questions that have come up from them reading the doc, the application documents and after visiting the site. And after gaining that information and feeling satisfied with it, the zoning board members will then have the opportunity to deliberate and act upon the, the area variance. So that, that is how it goes, if you have any questions for me at this time?
No, will it be one of these phone conversations, I assume?
Most likely, most likely, I mean, we have, things change so quickly and it's hard to anticipate the change, but let's plan on that. You've done a great job. We hear you very clearly. You've, you've gotten your information across successfully. So let's plan on, on meeting this way again in June, on June 15th.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you again, bye now.
Welcome, bye now. So before we adjourn, I want to thank Mr. Polito for being our moderator tonight. Did an excellent job making sure that we were all heard. And your ability to screen share, I'm envious, so thank you, thank you very much, Pat.
You're very welcome.
And may, if there's any other new business or any other concerns, I would ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Just Pat Polito, one more thing.
Sure.
We now have a Town of Brunswick YouTube channel. So this video will be up on that. And I will have a link on the town website under zoning for anybody who wants to go back and review any of this.
Terrific, thank you very much, you've made us all YouTube stars.
And we'll have to do our hair and makeup before.
There you go. So there's a motion to adjourn, member liked to second.
Member Steinbach, second.
Thank you, Member Steinbach. May we do a roll call to, to end the vote?
Certainly, Attorney Gilchrist. Member Steinbach?
Aye.
Member Schmidt?
Aye.
Member Shover?
Member Shover, aye.
Member Curran?
Aye.
And Chairperson Clemente.
Chairperson Clemente, aye, thank you very much. Have, have a good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
See you next week.
Go on, guys.